Good evening. It is now seven o'clock. I would like to call the Rockdale County Board of Education regular session to order. With Eagle Pride, please help me to welcome General Ray Davis, Middle School and Principal Kimberly Dyer. Welcome, Ms. Dyer. Will you introduce our inspirational speaker?
Chairman Brown, to our superintendent and to all of you, thank you for having our Golden Eagles. I have the pleasure of being the proud principal of Davis Middle School, and I'm going to introduce to you Grayson Cobb, eighth grade student, followed by Kendall Baker, seventh grade student. Please welcome them.
Good evening, Rockdale County Public Schools Board of Education Chairwoman Ms. Brown, Rockdale County Public Schools Board of Education Superintendent Dr. Oates and guests. My name is Grayson Cobb, and I am an eighth grade student at General Ray Davis Middle School. I'm here to read the poem Invictus by William Ernest Hensley as part of this evening's inspiration. Invictus. Out of the night that covers me, black as the pit from pole to pole, I think whatever gods may be for my unconquerable soul. In the fell clutch of circumstance, I have not winced nor cried out loud. Under the bludgeonings of chance, my head is bloody but unbowed. Beyond this place of wrath and tears looms but the horror of the shade, and yet the menace of the years finds and shall find me unafraid. It matters not how straight the gates, how charged with punishments the scroll. I am the master of my fate. I am the captain of my soul. Thank you for all you have done to inspire my life as a Rockdale County Public School student, and I hope this reading has inspired you all this evening. Thank you.
A lot to come up after. Good evening, Rockdale County Public Schools Board of Education Chairwoman Ms. Brown, Rockdale County Public School Board of Education Superintendent Dr. Oates and guests. My name is Kendall Baker, as she said, and I am a seventh grade student of General Ray Davis Middle School. I am here to do a reading from Shakespeare's Hamlet as a part of the evening inspiration. It's a monologue from a father telling his son or sending his son off to school. The wind sets in the shoulder of a sail, and you are stayed for there, my blessing with thee. In these few percepts in the memory, see thou character. Give thy thoughts no tone, nor any unproportioned thought this act. Be thou familiar, but no means vulgar. Those friends thou hast in their adoption tried, grapple them to thy soul with hoops of steel, but do not dole thy palm with entertainment of each new hatchet unfledged comrade. Beware of entranced to a squirrel, but being inbert that the opposed may be aware of thee. Give every man thy ear, but few thy voice. Take each man's concern, but reserve thy judgment. This above all to twine or to thine own self be true, and it must follow. As the night, the day, thou canst not then be false to any man. Farewell, my blessing season, this and thee. Thank you all for what you have done to inspire my life as a Rockdale County Public School student, and I hope that me reading this inspired all you.
Yeah. Okay, Grayson. Grayson and Kendall, will you please take the podium and lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance? And everyone, please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, indeed. All right, thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second Akita Palmer.
A motion to approve the agenda has been made by Heather and second by Akita. Is there any discussion?
Personnel issue. As we received this information this morning, that would give us a little more time to review that information.
Okay. Okay, a motion has been made to remove item one. All in favor? Any opposed? So who's gonna break the tie? Dr. Oates? What Santana? So what we do?
If the motion doesn't pass, then...
It remains.
Yeah, it will remain. Your agenda remains the same.
Okay, so motion did not pass. All right. Next, we welcome the CJ Hicks Falcons and Principal Dr. Erica Wakefall.
Thank you and good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Duncan, board members, Superintendent Dr. Oates, cabinet and guests. Again, I am Dr. Erica Wakefall, Principal of CJ Hicks Elementary, and tonight, along with Ms. Sarah Davy, our agriculture teacher, and several of our amazing students, we are going to present to you on innovations in agriculture education.
Agriculture. We are CJ Hicks, the first elementary school to offer agriculture as a class to every student from pre-K to fifth grade in Rockdale County. We observe the world around us, we nourish our minds and bodies, and we gain an understanding of and appreciation for the time and labor it takes to make our own food. Through lessons in the Agriculture and Sustainability class, students are eating healthier, learning to cook, practicing important academic skills, and learning how to positively impact their world. My name is Sarah Davy, and I began my teaching career in Newark, New Jersey, and started working at CJ Hicks in July of 2021. One day, I discussed my love of gardening with a coworker who said, "You know we have a garden out back, but we haven't used it since before COVID." So I got permission from Dr. Wakefall to build up a garden program, and during after-school and during my planning periods, I would take students out to the garden to help me build raised beds, add gravel and soil and compost to the beds, and prep the garden for growing. I donated 24 tires to the school to use as a pollinate tire garden to reinforce the importance of helping pollinators thrive in our area.
Board members, you have a copy of the standards that Ms. Davy uses in her classroom. Each grade level has an essential question that they work on every time they enter the classroom, and they are aligned to the standards. Kindergarten's essential question is, how do we know things grow? First grade's essential question is, how can we grow our community? Second grade's essential question is, why is it important to take care of your community? Third grade's essential question is, can humans positively influence their environment? Fourth grade's essential question is, how can we learn to feed ourselves? And fifth grade's essential question is, what does it take to feed our community? The goal is to have standards built upon each other so that we can train our students, who are also our future citizens and workforce, about the importance of caring for each other and the ecosystems around them. From counting and sorting seeds to saving our food to read, write, and execute recipes, identifying pests and weeds to pollination and germination, every student in pre-K through fifth grade is exposed to agriculture at our school. Now, we are going to let our students tell you a little bit about their experience.
My name is Princess Naiis Allen. I'm in Ms. Carter's pre-K class. We are planting strawberries, seeds, and seedlings. I love agriculture because we get to eat healthy snacks.
My name is Brendan White. I'm in Ms. Holt's kindergarten class. I love going outside and helping Ms. Davy in the garden. Agriculture is important because if we have no farmers, we would have no food.
My name is Grayson Atkins, and I am in Ms. Edwards' first grade class. We are growing wildflowers in our pollinate tires and long-leaf pine trees at the back so it could help the planet.
My name is Bonnie Pym, and I'm in Ms. Addison's first grade class. First grade grows our community by helping our friends and helping the pollinators thrive.
Hi, my name is King Parks, and I am in Ms. McCall's class. And second grade is going tomatoes and strawberries. We want to have a high U so we can make french fries, strawberries, and what's it called? Strawberry chips and agriculture.
Hi, my name is Princess Navi, and I am in Mr. Eddie's second grade class. Agriculture is important because we learn about plants and lots of new things. We need to help nature because it helps fruit and vegetables with beautiful flowers.
My name is Devon Pop random. I am in Ms. Eddie's second grade classroom. I learned that agriculture, I learned that seeds come from flowers and that it is important to help the planet and not food.
Hi, my name is Seven Parks, and I am in Ms. Lopez's fifth grade class. My class, as well as Ms. Raina's class, are part of the Legacy Project. In agriculture, we will be planting flowering and fruit-bearing trees for the generations after us to have healthy snacks at recess.
My name is Jillian Adkins, and I am in Ms. Raina's fifth grade class. The agricultural and sustainability class has provided me with hands-on activities that help me understand nature. It also helps me realize global issues such as colony collapse disorder, where the bee populations are decreasing due to pesticides, herbicides, and habitat destruction.
My name is Kaye Guses, and I'm in Mrs. Lopez's fifth grade class. I love agriculture because I learned sandwiches, classification, what it takes for fruits and vegetables to grow, and we get to do experiments. I have learned how the food I buy from the store is made and what it takes for farmers to grow food so we can have food.
Thank you, Falcons. You may be seated. If y'all would give them another round of applause, please. Thank you. And so now, at this time, we do invite you to watch as some of our other students show you around the agriculture classroom and our garden.
My name is Ismael, and I came to present you our Lomi compost machine. We put fruits and vegetables like apples, bananas, and all of that stuff into the compost machine so we can turn it into soil for our wonderful plants. And this is our oven, the Brand New Ninja. We use it to make lots of stuff like apple chips, banana chips, carrot fries, and etc.
Over here, we have our hydroponic station. It's used to grow things with only water and using water. We have strawberry, miniature eggplants in Brazil, and many more. Over here, we have our grow light plants. And as you can see, we're growing some plants. And we have some examples like the cantar berry bells and the forgotten knox flowers. And then, we also have our avocado plants. And we have our grow light shells. Over here, we're growing thyme. And over here, we have...
Chives.
Chives. And as you can see, we have more plants.
My name's Karen, and this is our Board of Rites expectations. The R means respect, I is for integrity, S is for safety, E is for... Now, over here on this board explains what we are. We are all professionals in trade, and we are all polite, intelligent, and tenacious.
So that was our ag class and our garden.
Welcome to our Falcon Garden! These are our race beds. They're laying from pre-K to fifth grade.
My name is Ismael. This is the teacher group, and this is the kindergarten group. They are growing strawberries.
So this is the agriculture garden. We have pre-K through fifth grade. The pre-K is growing strawberries and seeds, from seeds and seedlings. You can't really hear because the generator's right behind there. So first through fifth grade is growing potatoes and strawberries from seedlings that were donated. And then, we also have some herbs and some trees that we are growing, and we're going to be planting for Earth Day. So every day, the students go outside and they water our plants. They learn how to take care of plants. They draw the plants and the flowers that they see, as well as write about it as well. So, how do I communicate with families? Seeing 850-plus students in a little over a week takes a lot. So every other month, I send out a Falcon Garden newsletter that includes photos, vocabulary words, songs, recipes, and lots of things for the families can do at home.
The great thing about this form of communication is that it reaches all of the families at our school, and it can be translated to their native language. When asked for feedback on the agriculture class, one family said, "A mis hijos les encanta esta clase. Se divierten y aprenden sobre tantas cosas. Estamos impresionados," which means, "My kids love this class. They have fun and learn about so many things. We are impressed."
I hear parents tell me a lot that the only thing they talk about at home is how much they love class with Ms. Davy, and it's wonderful to hear this because I absolutely feel the same way. I also truly believe that students are talking about what they do in my class because they are doing. They never know what they're going to do in my class, but they always know, no matter what, they get to learn with their brains and their bodies. So there's no way I could have made this Agriculture and Sustainability class happen without the help of some amazing partners. The reason the Georgia Farm Bureau image is the largest is because they're the largest donor for my classroom, and this is the Rockdale Georgia Farm Bureau. I can honestly say that without the support of the Rockdale Georgia Farm Bureau, my classroom would not be as literacy or activity-rich. Since last year, they have organized and donated materials for an agriculture book and activity-based lesson every single month for every single class at CJ Hicks. With almost 1,000 students at our school, the cost of materials adds up quickly. Farmers on the board have also donated seedlings. They come to volunteer for support during Agriculture Education Week, which is also this week, as well as Career Day. We were also able to have the Georgia Farm Bureau Ag STEM Trailer visit our school last school year, and I'm also a proud board member since June of last year, and the professional development that I've received through the Farm Bureau has been incredibly impactful.
Thank you. We are also very grateful for Todd Mohannon, the manager at Conyers Home Depot. He has given us a grant every year to purchase materials for the garden and this year's fifth grade legacy project that our students spoke about earlier. Data Academy is a STEM school based in Stone Mountain that has given each grade an opportunity to visit and experience a day of STEM-based learning through their STEAM land program. And Love is Love Cooperative Farm has donated food for staff wellness events as well as seedlings for our pre-K classes.
I have reached out to and connected to these and many other community organizations to ensure that our students have access to as many resources and professional insight as possible. This year has been a whirlwind of success. I know students have gained important academic and life skills through the activities done this year, and we're ready to do more. However, there's no way we can continue without appropriate resources and funding. One of the necessary tools, one of the biggest time consumers of my planning periods have been applying for grants to get the necessary tools and materials for my classroom. I've secured some, but for every about five or 10 I apply to, I might get one. We've also had a lot of field trips that had to be canceled due to funding and providing students with hands-on activities both in my classroom as well as at farms and STEM schools is an invaluable asset to their learning.
Finally, we have students who are in wheelchairs in some of our general education classes, as well as in our ready pre-K classes that cannot fully access the beauty of our garden. Without this access, their experiences can be different from their able-bodied peers, and we wish to be more inclusive with our practices. Although Ms. Davy has acquired a travel wheelchair ramp through a Donors Choose grant, which she did use last year, the pavers in the garden have moved some over time, and can be difficult for a wheelchair to pass through. So we really just want to ensure that all of our students are able to experience the beauty of the work that Ms. Davy is putting in with our students.
I have a huge vision of creating a large duck outside the garden to become an outdoor classroom so everyone can access the garden, and I can do more observation and group work outside.
We want to thank you for your time tonight, and we hope that you have enjoyed learning about innovations in agriculture at CJ Hicks Elementary School.
I just want to say that I thank you guys for coming to the podium and doing that for us, but the best part of that was seeing the parent's face in the background. You should have seen the parent's face in the background. They are so proud of their students. All right. So next, Cindy Ball, our Chief Strategy and Innovation, and Dr. Zelfin Smith Dixon, Chief Student Support Officer, will recognize our staff and students. Dr. Oates, would you please join me?
Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Duncan, Dr. Oates, our board members, and all of our guests. It is so nice to have such a packed room here this evening. Thank you for being here with us. Mrs. Helen Ruffin, a dynamic and innovative library media specialist in DeKalb County, created a unique reading competition in 1986. It was called the Reading Bowl, and in a competitive game format, questions students about the content of 20 Georgia Book Award nominees each year. In 2003 and '04, the Helen Ruffin Reading Bowl Steering Committee was created. With the help of this Steering Committee, the Georgia Helen Ruffin Reading Bowl is now open to students in grades four through 12 across the state. All school districts in Georgia are divided into one of six regions. Elementary and middle school students read and are quizzed on the 20 Georgia Book Award nominees, while high school students read and are quizzed on the 20 Georgia Peach Teen Book Award nominees, and the books change yearly. During the last few years, over 600 schools throughout Georgia have held competitions at the local school district level and have registered regional competitions. Tonight, we celebrate the accomplishments of the Lorraine Elementary Reading Bowl team that won second place in our district and went on to win third place in the region. Students, when I call your name, if you'll please come up front to receive your certificate and then remain up front here in the middle until everybody's up front, and we'll do a team photo. First, Austin Brown. McKinley Bryant. Leila Green. Susannah Hill. Gabrielle Pfeifer. Nathaniel Shelton. Auden Yula. And our coaches, Beth Clark and Kayla Hicks. Big smiles, everyone. And just so everyone knows, we will put all of the photos that we take on our social media. We have Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, so you can find them there and grab them there. Okay? One more. Our remaining students to be recognized this evening are all talented artists. In honor of March being National Art, Dance, Music, and Theater in our Schools Month, I will first read the superintendent's endorsement of the fine arts in our schools. It reads, "Whereas art, dance, music, and theater education is a viable academic endeavor and contributes educational benefits to all elementary and secondary students, including the following: Fine arts education develops students' creative problem-solving and critical thinking abilities; Fine arts education teaches sensitivity to beauty, order, and other expressive qualities; Fine arts education gives students a deeper understanding of multicultural values and beliefs; and fine arts education reinforces and brings to life what students learn in other subjects. Whereas our national leaders have acknowledged the necessity of including fine arts experiences in all students' education; and whereas March is officially recognized as Youth, Art, Dance, Music, and Theater Month, and Rockdale County Public Schools endorses this observance and encourages the support of quality school fine arts programs for all children and youth." Our first artists are from Honey Creek Elementary School. The Capital Art Exhibition is an annual student art exhibition in honor of National Youth Art Month. In Georgia, it has been a Georgia Art Education Association's tradition for over 50 years. It began under the gold dome, but is now too large for that space, so it's currently held in the Twin Towers Building adjacent to the Capitol. It is the largest statewide pre-K through college-age student art exhibition in Georgia. A reception was held on March 13th, and the exhibit ended March 16th, but you can still view the digital display on the Georgia Art Education Association's website. Tonight, we recognize two students from Honey Creek Elementary whose artwork was displayed at the Capital Art Exhibition. And I will direct your attention to the screen. I think we have a display of their artwork. Okay? First, we have Yoslin Mendez Martinez. And Dallas Winfield. Great. Congratulations. For many years, the anniversary of the founding of the Georgia Colony at Savannah on February 12, 1733, has been known as Georgia Day. Sorry, these are stuck together. Thought I was going to be slick and talk and give it to you at the same time. Nope, this one's separate. Recognized in many ways across the state, each year, the Georgia Historical Society hosts fun and unique opportunities for Georgia students to explore our state's past through the lens of historical research and creativity. In keeping with the Georgia History Festival theme, governing Georgia across three centuries, this year's Georgia Day statewide art contest and Georgia Day banner competition challenged students to explore the topic, "A Legacy of Leadership: Georgia's Elected Officials." Using creativity, students illustrated how Georgia's elected officials have demonstrated leadership qualities and executed their responsibility to govern. Tonight, we will recognize one student from General Ray Davis Middle School who was a winner in this year's statewide art contest. Winning the award "Most Original" for her artwork of Viola Ross Napier, congratulations to Leah Robinson. If you'll come in the center for a photo. And if you didn't know, Viola Ross Napier was one of the first two women, along with Bessie Kempton, to be elected into the House of Representatives in the U.S. state of Georgia, following the passage of the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, which gave women the right to vote. I won't try to talk at the same time this time. Should be four there. The Conyers-Rockdale Council for the Arts sponsored a unique opportunity for RCPS students to design the album covers for the Veterans Music Project. The Veterans Music Project provided a small group of local veterans the opportunity to write and record two original songs while working with professional music mentors. Each student was given a copy of the lyrics of one of the songs written by the veterans and asked to create an album cover based on what those lyrics made them feel or see inside. Each artist received a $50 monetary award from the Conyers-Rockdale Council for the Arts and will be recognized for their contribution in the song credits. That's awesome. From General Ray Davis Middle School, we congratulate. And I do want to first tell Michelle and Michaela on the recess to see Ms. Seibert because she has your monetary award. "The Way I Move" is the title, Michelle Aguilar. Titled "State of Mind" by Cameron Jeffries. Titled "Echoes," Michaela McCrany. And formerly at General Ray Davis Middle School, now at the Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology, the title is "Loving Life," Kaylee Williams. To continue our recognitions this evening, I will invite Dr. Smith Dixon to the podium.
So good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. Agriculture certainly is culture, and culture informs climate. So it could not be a better night to celebrate the progress of implementation of positive behavioral interventions and supports in the great state of Rockdale. And so we have at least three of our schools who have been recognized as PBIS Operational. It really, really is a big deal to be recognized on any particular level by the state for implementation of PBIS. And we have about 12 of our schools who have been recognized for implementation at emergent levels. And don't leave the others out because they are certainly coming around the corner. And so we're going to get ready for those recognitions.
Good evening Chairwoman Brown, Vice Duncan, Board members, Dr. Oats, Cabinet Honored Guests. First, we want to recognize our three schools for operational at Tier One. That would be High Tower Elementary, J.H. House Elementary, and Lorraine Elementary. Next, we have 12 schools at the emergent level at Tier One. We have Bartsdale Elementary, CJ Hicks Elementary, Conyers Middle School, Flatscho's Elementary, Davis Middle School, Honey Creek Elementary, Heritage High School, Memorial Middle, Memorial Middle, Peaks Chapel, Hind Street Elementary, Shoal Creek Elementary, and Sims Elementary. Uh-oh.
That's it? Okay, that's it.
Okay, at this time, we are going to take a short recess. 10 minutes at this time. Thank you. The board members can come down and greet. Heather. All right. It is now 7:50, and I would like to call the meeting back to order. We do have visitors tonight. Mr. Moses Perdue, please come to the podium. Mr. Moses Purdue, please come to the podium. This is the time when we allow the citizens three minutes to address the board. Please feel free to submit any documents to the board. And we do not normally address your concerns tonight, but we ask the administration to address your concerns and provide you with an appropriate response. If your topic involves a personnel matter or if you contend that your legal rights have been violated, we have specific grievance procedures for these matters. We respectfully ask that you refrain from making threats, personal attacks, slanderous remarks, or engaging in behavior that disrupts the decorum of this meeting. We would like to welcome Mr. Moses Purdue.
Good evening, Dr. Oats and esteemed board members. I come in support of you all. My name is Moses Purdue. I've been in law enforcement for over thirty-seven years. I bring a unique perspective. I police in traditional policing for twenty-five years. I also worked part-time as a resource officer in the city of Atlanta schools for four and a half years. I served as the Assistant Director of Safety and Security for Atlanta Public Schools. Now I'm the Chief of Police for Spelman College Higher Education. So I bring three different perspectives. I said before I come to support you all, but I do have some things that I want to address you all with. I'm concerned about the rising discipline problems in the schools, not just in our schools, but all over the United States. We see it every day. Also, I'm concerned about the safety and well-being of the educators and administrators and also the guests and family members that support our after-school programs and our sporting events. And two weeks ago, I was at a CEO symposium, National Organization for Black Law Enforcement, and this was one of the topics that we talked about, our schools in the metro and suburb, suburban areas all over the United States. So I'm coming here as a member of NAACP, a member of NOBLE, the National Organization for Black Law Enforcement, and a concerned citizen. Some of the things that, that I do want you all to think about, I know that you had this perspective a couple of years ago, but I know at least four school boards, school systems in the metro Atlanta area that started their own resource officers program. It's a wonderful program and you can get grants for it that will support you up to three years. And you still can partner with your local law enforcement agencies. And I've seen it prosper and I've seen it work. And it's something that I, I feel that you all should look back into and just explore those type of options and stuff because it gives you a force multiplier when not just having the, the resource officers in the school, but they work hand-in-hand with administrators and educators and the, and the, and the students get to know them. And I'm not looking for a job, y'all. Hopefully I, I have my second retirement in about four years. But I just want to say I'm here to support you all and God bless all of y'all because I know your job is very hard. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Purdue. Our next guest is Stephanie Curtis. Ms. Curtis, please come to the podium. Welcome.
Welcome. I am glad to be back home. As a former employee of Rockdale County Schools, a thirty-year resident of Rockdale County, I am a parent also. I have a graduate and I have a high school student. I just want to commend first. Out of the last, since 2018, I have watched Dr. Oats, how you have led this district, how you have led the teachers, the principals. And I am privy in the multiple organizations that I am a member of and as a Rockdale County CASA, I've watched how your leadership has trickled down to the schools' leaders in the community. Thank you for being present. Thank you for recognizing that our students matter. Thank you for knowing that your presence at their programs matter. To the board members that I know, some I don't, I have seen you in the community. Madam Chair, thank you for showing up for our children. There are so many that don't have parents. They're in foster care. But to see Board Member Palmer, to see Board Member Brown and Heather and Jackson and the others, thank y'all for being there. Thank you for being consistent in our children's lives. They need that. As a seven-year employee for the alternative school in Rockdale County, you matter to those children. You love on them. I've had to send messages to you after hours on weekends and you recognize and you made our children a priority. And I thank you. Please know that the social communities that I'm involved in, they recognize your efforts. They see you in the community and they support you with their votes. So please continue to do what you do and continuous improvement in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Curtis. All right. At this time, I would like to turn it over to you, Dr. Oats. We're having the update.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Alrighty, good evening, Madam Chair Brown, Vice Chair Duncan, board members. I'll be going over the final financial report for February and my final financial report to you all as well. So the revenue for February, eleven million. One hundred fifty-eight point five million year-to-date, which is seventy-nine point two percent of our budget. Last period, we received ten point four million, one hundred forty-two point two million year-to-date, which is seventy-eight point six percent of our budget. Expenses were sixteen point nine million for February, one hundred thirty-nine point five million year-to-date, which is sixty-eight point, sixty-eight percent of our budget. Last February, we see fifteen point six million. We expended fifteen point six million, one hundred twenty-three million year-to-date, which was sixty-six point seven percent of our budget. Outstanding incomes, one million, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Our fund balance in the February is approximately fifty-five point three million. Last year, we were at fifty-seven point eight million. Assets, fifty-five point three. Liberties all cleared. Fund balance at fifty-five point three. Thank y'all very much and I appreciate all your support.
Mr. Holt. Yes, sir. First off, thank you for your service to Rockdale County. We are, we are so sad to see you go. We wish you the best of luck in your, your new gig in Walton County. But before you leave, I'd be remiss if I didn't ask you, you being the CFO of Rockdale County Public Schools and this being your last couple of weeks on the job and us being in the budget formulation process currently. Or is there any surprises? Is there any things that we need to be worried about as board members as we put together and start putting together the budget?
I will say that it, it is going to be a tough budget season. We're, you know, we've got some things that we're working through. We have in our custodians, there's a big piece coming back into our budget. It's four million. That's tough. So I will say it is going to be a tough budget season. So we've, you know, we hadn't, we're meeting again, but I don't have my state revenue. I don't have all my revenue numbers yet. So, but I will tell y'all right upfront, it's going to be tough.
Thank you.
Before you step off, this is a tradition and I think this is a fitting time when we have an executive cabinet member who is, who has presented their last presentation in their last board meeting. We, we honor your service with a standing ovation. So thanks for all you have done for the good.
Madam Chairwoman, I, I just have a brief presentation. And if we have it ready. Let me, let's go back to this first slide first. Let me just say that, of course, this is a very active season. Obviously, a lot of information is being disseminated. But, and, and obviously, as superintendent, I respect the, the role distinction, obviously, between Board of Education members, both sitting Board of Education members, prospective Board of Education members and the superintendent. However, as the superintendent and chief executive officer for the school district, when data from the school district is represented in the public and I think in the, in this instance misrepresented, it's incumbent upon me to seek to fact-check and, and correct the record. And so recently, it was brought to my attention that there's been information that's been disseminated in various social media outlets on purporting to represent achievement data for Rockdale County Public Schools specifically, reading proficiency and, and numeracy proficiency or mathematical proficiency. And, and so I think it's very, very important for me to seek to correct the record. So if you'll go to the next slide. If you will look on our left, if you're looking at it, depending on your vantage, obviously, if you're out there, it may be on the right. But under false, that data is data that's been disseminated and represented as being accurate data and they attributed the source to U.S. News and World Report and Rockdale County Public Schools. I assure you, I don't know what data they're referring to with U.S. News and World Report, but I can tell you that data has not been disseminated by Rockdale County Public Schools because it's inaccurate. So on the left, as for those of us on the dais and depending on your vantage out there, under false, that's the information that's been disseminated that only twenty-three percent of elementary students tested at or above the proficient level for reading. False, truth, you see that number fifty-eight point thirty-eight percent at or above. And then you can go down the list. Let me jump down to where it says twenty percent of high school students did not test with proficiency and that, I believe, is looking at high school. Well, one of the things you need to understand is that high school is unique and that there are four specific end-of-course high school milestones exams. One of them is coordinate algebra. Unlike the middle and elementary school level where you can aggregate the performance across the grade levels for reading and for math, that's not the case for high school is there are specific courses. So the only tested math subject for high school is coordinate algebra. And so I'm, I'm certainly sharing this information publicly and I'll be sharing this particular document with the board because I think that as that type of dissemination and disinformation is being put out there and intersecting with an election season, it's going to be important for those of our board members to be able to accurately represent the data. And so again, let me, let me be clear as I have been repeatedly. We have a lot more work to do, a lot more progress to make. But when our data, our students' data is misrepresented, whether it's out of ignorance or dishonesty, one would be unacceptable and the other would be inexcusable. And I have an obligation as superintendent and CEO to call that out and to correct the record with the data. The source is the Georgia Department of Education. You can go to the GADOE website. You can look up because any data that's representing or purporting to represent our students' reading proficiency or numeracy proficiency should be based upon the most recent Georgia Milestones Assessment, which is from two thousand twenty-three, which is what the data that is readily available at the DOE website. As another example, this document cited our graduation rate at eighty-one point four percent. But we all know that we just had our highest graduation rate ever since the state adopted the four-year cohort calculation methodology beginning with the graduating class of two thousand twelve. It was eighty-seven point zero four percent. It's actually been featured, Cindy, I believe, on billboards around the county. And yet that document represented it as eighty-one point four. So again, I say not only to those of us here, but also those who may be viewing this via live stream, please look at this information. Please know that the accurate information is shared. I, I hope you will access that by way of its availability at our website. I'll share it with the board so that they can have that information to counter any misinformation. And, and listen, again, I'll say it again. When I said whether it's, whether it's due to ignorance and when I say ignorance, I'm meaning simply when one doesn't know. That's not a pejorative. I don't mean to use that term pejoratively, but that literally, denotatively, ignorance means to not know. So whether someone doesn't know and they're sharing that misinformation and disinformation or whether they're being, hopefully it's not the case, they're being willfully dishonest, we have an obligation as a school district to correct the record so that our students' achievement is not being misrepresented. So I offer that, Madam Chairwoman, as my superintendent's remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Oats, for clarifying that for everyone. The board has reviewed the minutes for all board meetings held in the month of February. Do I hear a motion to approve those meetings?
So moved, Heather.
A motion has been made to approve the February board minutes as presented by Ms. Duncan and by Ms. Second, um, seconded by Ms. Sandra Jackson-Litt. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. There is no old business or new business. Last week, the board voted to place the action items on a consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the action items under the consent agenda?
So moved, Justin.
A motion to approve the action items under the consent agenda has been made by Mr. Kenny and seconded by Ms. Duncan. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Under the new business discussion agenda, is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to approve the supplemental personnel report? Motion to approve the supplemental personnel report. Can I get a second? I approve. A motion has been made by Ms. Duncan, seconded by Ms. Palmer. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? No? You won't be able to move it. But if you have any discussion, if you want a discussion, you can do it now.
The item on, the day it's been voted on is just the supplemental personnel report. There's one employee, I think the board is voting to approve termination of that employee. So that is what the board is being asked to vote on.
All right, all in favor? Motion carries. There is no board discussion, but do I hear a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel? Second. A motion has been made by Ms. Duncan, seconded by Ms. Jones. All in favor? Motion carries.
It is now nine eighteen and we are back into open session. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Dr. Robin Collins, currently assistant principal at McDonough Middle School to principal at Edwards Middle School effective July the first, two thousand and twenty four?
Come on.
Second, Akita Palmer.
Okay, a motion has been made by Ms. Duncan, second by Ms. Palmer, all in favor. All opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Dr. Anthony Browning, currently assistant principal at High Tower Trail Elementary School to assistant principal at C.J. Hicks Elementary School, effective July the first, two thousand and twenty four? Come on board.
So move.
Motion has been made by Ms. Palmer, second by Ms. Duncan, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Melissa Travis, currently instructional coach at High Tower Trail Elementary School to assistant principal at High Tower Trail Elementary School effective July the first, two thousand and twenty four?
Second, Akita.
Motion has been made by Ms. Duncan and second by Ms. Palmer, all in favor. Five and one, okay.
One abstention.
Thank you. With no further business to discuss, do I hear a motion to conclude the meeting? A motion to conclude the meeting has been made by Ms. Sandra Jackson Letton, second by Ms. Duncan, all in favor? Motion carries.